Watch it and participate from the safety of your homes. The meeting can be viewed on cable channel nine, six, and AT&amp;T U-verse, channel 99, and it's live streaming on glendaleca.gov. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting these questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person during the Glendale City Council meeting. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Agajanian.
Present.
Hesakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. What's next, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, April 27, 2021, special public meeting of the City Council was posted on April 21, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Is this a public hearing, Mr. Garcia? Do I need to open the?
Yes.
I thought so.
It is a public hearing, as noticed as a public hearing.
Yeah, I didn't see it here. Okay, so I will open the public hearing. And Mr. Galanian.
Yes.
Mayor, I would have to read this item into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had done that. Go ahead.
One would be community development regarding consideration of stage one design review for case number PDR 1916682, a proposed 840-room hotel at 601 625 North Brand Boulevard, consisting of four-story podium and two towers of 34 stories and 35 stories respectively. One motion approving stage one design.
Okay. Galanian.
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of City Council, I'm just going to turn it over to Roger Kiesel, our senior planner with Community Development Department, to provide the presentation to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. The clicker is working, so. All right. Good evening, or good afternoon, Mayor Devine and members of the City Council. Before you this afternoon is a stage one design review for a proposed project at 601 through 625 North Brand Boulevard. Sorry about that. Let me give you a brief overview of the project. The proposed project is a new 840-room hotel. The hotel includes a four-story podium with a pool and spa and an eighty-deck on that floor, as well as a landscaped open space between the two towers. The west tower is 34 feet and 370 feet in height. The east tower is 35 stories and 380 feet in height. Overall, the hotel room sizes are large. The vast majority of the rooms are between 500 and 800 square feet. There are eight suites that are over 2,000 square feet in height, or 2,000 square feet in area, and then another 260 approximately rooms between 1,000 and 1380 square feet. Parking is located above ground, at grade, and at subterranean levels, and is all wrapped by either lobby space, retail space, or hotel uses. The publicly accessible open space is proposed adjacent to the Brand Sanchez intersection and also includes the existing plaza along Brand as well as the passeos within the currently developed project. The site is 5.2 acres and located on the west side of Brand Boulevard between Sanchez Drive and Doran Street. The site is owned DSP with a Gateway District designation. The district allows a maximum of 275 feet and 7.25 FAR. With a community benefit, the maximum height rises to 380 feet and a 7.5 FAR. The proposed hotel will be located in the northern portion of the site on what is now a surface parking lot. The existing buildings, including the 14-story office building as well as the five, as well as the one-story gym and the five-story parking garage on Doran, will all remain. The neighborhood is surrounding, or the neighborhood immediately surrounding the project includes high-rise buildings, parking garages, and mixed-use developments. This is a location map. The outline of the entire site is in red. The location of the proposed hotel is in the northern portion of the site, and that's also designated in red. And it spans the entire length of Sanchez Drive. You can see the freeway is immediately north of the project, Brand Boulevard to the east and Doran to the south. Real quickly, this slide looks east from Sanchez Drive and shows the existing parking garage and the office tower. The surface parking lot is in the foreground. That is where the hotel is proposed. You'll see some, the street trees and shrubs. Right in back of that is a surface parking lot where the hotel is proposed. This slide looks northwest at the intersection of Brand and Doran. The existing office tower and one-story building are prominent. You can see the five-story parking garage toward the left-hand side of the picture. The following slide shows adjacent development. The top slide is to the north. You can see the buildings beyond the freeway and the freeway is below. The lower slide is, or the lower picture, I should say, is the development on the east side of Brand Boulevard. Both photos on this slide show the development along Doran with the Wells Fargo Bank at the intersection of Doran and Brand. And then this slide shows the Moderna, Modera Glendale development, which is immediately west of the site. These pictures are taken from Central. The applicant has applied for stage one design review of the project. This stage concentrates on site planning of the project as well as mass and scale. Design and detailing of the project will be reviewed more completely in the stage two design of the project. Real quickly, this is an overall site plan of the project in relation to the existing development. The proposed project is in color on the top part of the slide, and existing development is sort of a gray scale on the lower two-thirds of the site. This is a larger view of the hotel site plan, taken at the ground floor. The hotel lobby is shown in pink. Retail and commercial areas are brown. Service areas and driveways are in the sort of purplish color, and then parking is in gray. The next few slides are just the floor, some of the floor plans of the project. Subterranean levels of parking. I may need your help.
Go ahead.
Come on.
Nope. The first level is subterranean parking. Again, this is the at-grade, so this is what you'll see along the street. Next slide, please. The mezzanine level, these are the levels between the ground floor and the podium. Next slide. Levels two through four. Next slide. This is the podium level, which shows the pool and the spa, and then the sort of landscape garden area between the two towers. Next slide. Levels, I think, five through 17. Levels 18 through 33 of the project, and this shows where the building steps in according to our DSP guidelines. Next slide. These are the two top levels, levels 34 and 35. Again, you can see us stepping there. Next slide. Elevation drawings. This is the north elevation, and this elevation is what you'd see from the freeway. So the hotel lobby is sort of in the middle of this, and then the two, I'm sorry, then the two towers rise on either side of the lobby. Next slide. This is the south elevation. You'll see the existing five-level parking garage in the foreground along Doran, and then the two, the two two proposed towers. Next slide. The west elevation. And then next slide. This is the east elevation. This is the elevation along Brand Boulevard. Next slide. So a quick section drawing of the project. You can see how the subterranean parking levels kind of interact with the whole site and the above-grade parking as well as the podium. Next slide. Some perspective renderings. This is kind of a airplane bird's-eye view. The project is sort of in the center of the picture. Next slide. This is a more on-the-ground perspective, looking, looking south, looking southwest. Next slide. This is a perspective from the intersection of Sanchez and Brand. The DSP identifies this intersection, the Brand Sanchez intersection, as an entry location, which is appropriate for a landmark architectural feature. And the DSP further spells out it can be a tower or a prominent entry or specialized signs. This perspective shows the street intersection and how the applicant is proposing this entry location to be treated. Next slide. And then this is a perspective of the building along Sanchez. Next slide. Publicly accessible open space. A publicly accessible open space is located in the eastern portion of the site near the intersection of Brand and Sanchez. The existing publicly accessible open spaces, which is part of the project, is more along the south side or south area of the project, southeast area, and then includes a plaza and some existing passeos. Next slide. The DSP includes a community benefits incentive program. This program allows increases in height and floor area. Hotel use is one of those uses. This allows an increase in height of, from 275 feet to 380 feet, and an FAR increase from 725 to 7.5, I'm sorry, 7.25 to 7.5. As part of this community benefits program, the hotel will need to enter into either a development agreement or a covenant to ensure that the hotel remains as such. Next slide. The Design Review Board reviewed the project as an advisory body on October 22 of last They had a number of comments, and that was spelled out more fully in the staff report. With regard to site planning, the board identified a couple concerns, mostly related to publicly accessible open space and then the internal circulation within the parking garage. With regard to mass and scale, they thought the project had an excessive scale, and they noted that with the large, reducing the large hotel room sizes could help with sort of mitigating the scale they felt was too big. With regard to design and detailing, they did have some concerns. As I mentioned earlier, stage two review really hones down on the design and detailing of the project. In general, the board thought the project was well-thought-out. They liked, they enjoyed the modern design. They did think the overall design was a little bit too urban and not necessarily specific to Glendale, that the building could have been, could be built anywhere, and they wanted something that more said, that more said Glendale in the design. They did have some concerns with how the project would age, as well as they believed it was not necessarily meshing with the existing development, the office tower, the gym building, particularly of the existing development that would, in fact, remain. Next slide. The board and staff have a number of recommendations for the project. The first is to re-study the existing buildings and plazas to better, to provide better integration and connectivity with the proposed, with the proposed project. The second comment was relocate and/or eliminate the Brand Boulevard driveway entrance to the hotel. There are two, there are three entrances to the site, two along Sanchez, one along Brand, and they were concerned with the Brand Boulevard entrance. The third comment was consider including roof decks on the towers in the, in the stage two design. The board was concerned and wanted more fleshing out with how deliveries, car services, and traffic will utilize the site as well as the parking structure, the internal circulation of the parking structure. A reduction in size, height, and scale of the project by either reducing room sizes or other means was identified, and this goes back with what the board felt was an excessive scale to the proposed project. Also, as I've mentioned before, amending the project to make it more site-specific, amending the project so that this building clearly says, okay, this is in Glendale. Restudy the facade treatment to simplify the appearance. And then finally, provide a maintenance schedule to ensure that the project will age well. Next slide, and final slide, actually. You all have a number of alternatives regarding the stage one design. Alternative one is approve stage one design with the recommended comments that I just made. Stage two, approve, or alternative two, sorry, approve stage one design subject to your all's recommendations. Alternative three, deny the approval of stage one design and direct, and direct the project to be redesigned. And then the final alternative is that you may consider alternatives not proposed by staff. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have the owner, developer, anyone on the phone to talk to us?
I saw the developer briefly. Yes, developer and architect are online.
Okay. Names, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Spector. I'm from Oni Group.
Okay, Mark, would you like to?
My name is Saleem Narayanan. I am from IBI Group Architects, and I am with my colleagues, Nancy Clayton, Manuel Samigul, and Shawlen Lee. Thank you.
Okay, so shall I give them like 10 minutes to?
That's your discretion, Madam.
Okay, let's, would council like to hear from the architect and the developer for about 10 minutes, or would you like to ask questions?
Yeah, I have a question for staff maybe first.
Okay.
I don't know if you've seen this letter that we got from the attorneys for 1911. There was just one thing I wanted to clarify. On, do they have page numbers here? On page seven, on building height, I don't know if you have this.
I have.
Oh, okay, you have not seen it?
I have not, okay. I have not seen the letter.
To review, I think, of the DRB's comments on the project.
Yeah, but there was one thing here that I don't think came up at the DRB meeting, and I'm not clear on it. So I understand that, you know, because hotels are preferred use and they get the density bonuses, they get to, you know, additional height, but then this letter says the environmental impact report for the DSP contemplates at most a 25-story maximum even with incentives.
Probably.
Is that, and they say this is inconsistent with?
Either, I think, Mr. Kiesel or Mr. Calvert probably can explain that particular point.
Okay, that was the, because I was, where I'm, I'm trying to get at.
It's a third question.
All right, Mr. Calvert.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So what happened when we amended the DSP and updated it? We actually removed the stories requirement as part of those development standards and just focused on building height. The prior review, environmental review, already looked at the maximum height, which is truly the most impactful part of that analysis, not the stories. The stories is really, at the end of the day, kind of inconsequential because the density remains the same, and so does the building height itself. We were just allowing a little bit more flexibility to create more floors so that we could free up more of the land area for some of the open space requirements that we had put in place as part of the updated DSP.
So you're saying that the environmental impact report had a story, kind of a maximum number of stories, and it had a maximum height?
Well, the DSP itself did, right? So the DSP itself had a height and a story.
A height.
And the stories was eliminated.
And the maximum height remained the same. That's a key part to, or point to make, is that the maximum height remained the same regardless.
So I guess, so if we were saying at the time 25 stories, and what was the height?
A 380 feet, I believe it is.
And they're doing 35 stories with that same height?
Correct.
So it seems like we were contemplating pretty tall ceilings in the original.
We were, and that was part of the incompatibility that we saw when we were trying to create a little bit more flexibility so that we could create these narrower towers that would open up more ground level floor, or for open space, to take the story requirement out. Because at the end of the day, what was in there, the story requirement and the height were not compatible with one another. It was essentially encouraging very, very tall floor-to-ceiling heights that just aren't all that common.
And does that create any kind of problem with, you know, we went through an EIR process, and now we're pulling, we're making a change to that?
No, because the overall maximum height remained the same, so that physical change to the environment would not change. The maximum height is still the same, and the density is also still the same. And those are the two points that would have triggered a further environmental review. But since we held those the same, essentially, it is the same amount of development going into the same box. It can just have a different number of floors.
Okay. All right.
And Mr., if no one else, I have one question. Since you alluded to the open space, one of the DRB members mentioned that they are using the existing paseo as part of their required public open space. Is that the intent of the, or the spirit of the DSP?
That is part of it. We do allow in these circumstances, or we have, have allowed for the existing space to be used. One thing to note is council can obviously offer feedback on that, but also opportunities to improve those existing areas if council does desire, so that those existing open spaces are brought more in line with maybe current design and development standards, and also something just more compatible with the new development that's being proposed.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Spector.
Great, thank you.
Like to comment?
Sure. We'll, we'll take 10 minutes. We'll be very brief.
Thank you.
Roger gave a very thorough presentation.
Can we lift the volume?
Highlight a couple of key points.
Can you, Mr. Spector, can you maybe speak louder? We're having our time hearing you.
Can you hear me now? Closer to microphone. He's wearing.
I have a microphone here.
Okay, all right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, barely.
How about now?
Okay, better.
Great.
Okay.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Mark Spector. I am the vice president of development at Oni Group, the owner of 601 Brands. We're excited to be here today. We've been working on a development concept for this site for quite some time, and we're finally here at the Part One hearing, which is a big step forward for us. Oni is a 50-year-old, 50-year-old family-owned company that has built over 15,000 new homes, owns and manages 7,200 rental apartments, has built and owns 11.5 million square feet of office, retail, and industrial space, and we have a total development pipeline of 28 million square feet. The company has never sold an asset, which allows us to take a long-term perspective in our developments and in working with the city and community to deliver successful projects. We've made a significant investment in Glendale already through not only the 601 Brand Office Building and Development Site, but we also own the 535 Brand Office Building and seven, and another office building at 700 North Brands. Regarding our hotel proposal, we're, like I said, we're very excited to get your feedback. A few items I should point out. Our project follows the downtown zoning requirements, and we're not asking for any variances or exceptions to the zoning code with our proposal. Our project is designed to be phased so that we can build one tower and then a second tower down the road, depending on the market. And lastly, as you're aware, a project of this size would have a significant boost to the local economy through, in the form of not just long-term jobs, but also in hotel tax revenue. And with that, I will turn it over to Saleem from IBI to walk you through, through the design of the project, and I'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Council, and housing authority members in public. We understand the project is in a very early stage of the design approval process. We are here to listen and take your feedback to our drawing board for further sharpening the fences or refining the design for the next stage. With that, I would like to share my screen and briefly give through some of the highlights Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
We can.
This is an aerial view of the project seen from the northeast of North Brand. The project is located at the corner of Sanchez and North Brand, facing, affording Sanchez and overlooking the Ventura Freeway. There are a number of mixed-use projects surround in the, in the near vicinity from six to 24 stories. For the, our main consideration for the design development for this project is based on three items. Number one, respected DSP guidelines and the site-specific feedback we received from the city planning. Number two, develop mass, scale, and form inspired from the natural and built environment of the North Glendale Gateway District. And number three is to propose space planning and publicly appropriate for the site, and we believe that this will contribute to the liveliness of the mixed-use community of this area. And we believe that this will contribute to the liveliness of the mixed-use community of this area. I have a bit of a lag in changing the sheet. This is another view from the northeast from the Plastray Nile Valley. You can see the project has different stepping mass form and articulated facade. The project has a 60-foot, 60-feet-high podium along Sanchez and above that there are two towers which has stepping masses. Those will complement the existing 24-story and other building masses in the area. The articulated balcony details are to create a dynamic architectural character that would be attractive and interesting for the pedestrians and public from the different angles of the street corners. This screen sees an overall site contest and the diagram to the top right-hand corner is an extract from the DSP. In that diagram, you will notice that the DSP envisions a linear park with a future transit hub built over the Ventura Freeway spanning from North Brand to North Central. And the red outline shown here is the proposed project overlooking this proposed future park. We believe once completed, this project will add to the urban fabric of this area. This is an overall site plan. Roger has gone through the details, so I will jump into some of the areas of the project. This is a schematic massing diagram showing the different uses of the project. At the ground level, you can see the central pink area that is the main lobby serving both the hotel towers. And these two other brown... Three other brown look areas shown here, they are retail units fronting Sanchez. The light yellow and light orange areas are the hotel guestroom levels. And the blue color here, which is above this 60-foot podium, is the amenity level serving Glendale Project. This is a ground floor plan showing the hotel entrance fronting Sanchez, three retail units fronting along Sanchez with a corner plaza with outdoor seating at the corner of Grant and Sanchez. There are three parking entries, one from North Brand and two from Sanchez. The main vehicular access to the hotel drop-off area is through the parking. And this is... The main purpose for this is to avoid any queuing of vehicles at the main entry locations so that the queuing for this hotel lobby will be within the building. The bottom left-hand corner shows a beacon element at the corner of Sanchez and North Brand. And this is one of the characters developed based on the DSP guideline. This plan shows the amenity level that is above the podium roof. The whole amenity serving this facility is at this level with an outdoor swimming pool and spa areas. There will be other programs will be developed during the detailed design stage. This page shows a simple diagram showing how the massing is developed following the DSP guidelines. The diagram one to the top left-hand corner shows a 60-story podium box with a tower form set 20 feet away from the front of the podium. The diagram two shows how that mass is split into two towers and interesting smaller components. Diagram three shows the articulation of the tower tops with the angular screens and also the development of the corner 11. The diagram four shows more refined details and fine-grained articulation to the facade treatments. The top right-hand corner image in this is a view of the Verdugo Mountains as seen in a highlight... The geometric patterns of the mountains highlighted in San Anshii. This is the main inspiration for our project. As you can see on the bottom right-hand corner, what we tried to attempt here is to create a vertical hill effect through this endulated balcony treatments, rising to the top from the bottom with the varying geometric patterns and ending with the tower tops with angular forms and also the corner element with angular forms inspired from the angular patterns of the mountain geometry.
Mr. Narayanun, if you would wrap it up, please. Can you finish your presentation?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam. I will stop sharing. If we have time left, we have a short animation we can show you very quickly.
Can we do that right now?
Mayor, yes.
The animation is with the city staff.
Oh, okay.
If someone can show that, that'll be good.
Yes, we'll look at it right now. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, what is that?
The animation. So they'll take us through the plan.
The main objective is to show the public room experience as you see from a pedestrian scale. We have used different materials and different window patterns to create interesting articulation to the public room. This shows the amenity pool deck. And it has a sense of landscape similar to the ground plane. And this shows an overall aerial view with the different geometric patterns of the balconies. While both towers are similar in nature, both are distinct characters with the different treatments to the balconies, so they will be complementing to each other. The stepping in the mass of the towers are to provide a proportionate relationship to the adjoining tower forms. And this is the corner beacon element we think would be appropriate for the Gateway District. Thank you very much. We are here to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor, we do have four callers on the line.
Okay, let's hear from the callers.
Mayor, would you like to give them three minutes?
Let's give them two minutes. That's enough.
Joshua Christensen? Joshua, you're live. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Joshua Christensen. How's it going? City council members and mayor. I live in the Pelantoni District of Glendale, California, and I am 100% against this project and any designs that it may have until there is an agreement with labor until this happens. We need to have skilled and trained workforce be a requirement on this project. We need to have local hire as a requirement on this project. And ONI has failed, failed to come to the table and talk with us about that and come to an agreement with that. We need to put people back to work. This pandemic has put a lot of people out of work. It's time to... If they want to help build the community and really put their mouth anywhere their mouth is, let's do this. Let's get some mortgage-paying jobs so people can continue to pay their bills here in Glendale. Until they put these on this project and make this a requirement for this project to be built, I say no until those projects... Until they come to the table and do that. And I'm asking all the city council members to vote no on any approval that they ask for until they do so. And that's my time. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Joshua. Next caller, please.
Jared Langford. Jared, you're live. Go ahead.
Hello, council members. My name is Jared Langford. I'm a representative of Southwest Carpenters Union, representing over 5,000 hard-working men, men and women in this region. I'm speaking to you today to voice harmful opposition of this ONI project. ONI has a long history of using irresponsible contractors that fail to pay a fair wage and provide healthcare benefits to their workers. ONI also fails to use skilled and trained workers who carry the proper certifications from the state of California. ONI is one bad act that cannot be trusted. With its developers' past practices, there needs to be a requirement for the developer to use a local skilled and trained labor workforce and pay area standard wages with benefits to the construction workforce. If there is no requirement for this, ONI will 100% screw our community out of good-paying local jobs that contribute to the health and wealth of our community. The council has full authority to make these requirements since the developer needs to enter into a development agreement with the city. This project should be required to have community benefits and those benefits should be good-paying construction jobs with benefits and a local skilled and trained workforce building the project once construction starts. We need to invest in our local residents and not a Canadian developer that's looking up fat in his pocket and drive down wages. Bottom line, if there's no labor standard, no community benefits such as jobs, wages, and benefits, there should be no project. Council members, I urge you to vote no until ONI can make a commitment upfront to using a skilled and trained workforce and providing area standard wages with benefits to the construction workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Next.
Mayor, I am receiving more callers. Do you want me to stop taking calls?
Yes, let's... How many more do you have now?
I have three at this point.
Okay, let's stop there.
Let's stop there. Thank you. Michael McCarron. Michael, you're live. Michael?
Hey, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hey, good morning or good afternoon. My name is Michael McCarron. I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I currently reside and live, work, and recreate in the vicinity of the project. I believe I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of carrying out this proposed project. The city slash county should require the project to be built utilizing a local and skilled and trained workforce. Local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. In a recent report, 2020, reported titled "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030", the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upscaling California's workforce can positively affect returns on a climate mitigation effort. The city council has ample discretion to require local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements for this project since the project is required to enter into a development agreement or a covenant with the city as part of the city's community benefits program. Local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements would serve to advance the downtown-specific plan's economic development policies, which requires that the development in downtown Glendale increase employment opportunities for Glendale residents. The project is inconsistent with the design standards set forth by the downtown-specific plan. The project fails to provide adequate and compliant publicly accessible open space. The project's massing scale are out of character with the surrounding area with the two 34 and 35-story buildings that tower over everything around it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next caller.
Nick Reyes, you're live. Nick, go ahead.
Thank you for taking my call. Again, my name is Nick Reyes and I'm a local carpenter. I've been doing this for a little bit over 20 years. And I'm in total opposition of this ONI project. I let the city US council members require the developer to agree to use a responsible contractor, one that would pay area standards. I don't mind, you know, having an out-of-town come to our town and build as long as they stick with the rules of the area. The use of apprentices from the state accredited apprenticeship program, I believe in community wealth and what by that I mean better jobs, better wages, and benefits. If they cannot agree to that, I'm asking you to say no to this project. And you can implement this language as part of the development agreement. Thank you for your time. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next.
Last caller, Carol Kirchen. Carol, you're live. Go ahead.
Hi there. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Divine, and council members. My name is Carly Kirchen and I'm speaking on behalf of United Year Local 11. We are concerned with the project's current design, including lack of publicly accessible open space, excessive massing and scale, the proposed transfer of SAR and air rights from the existing structures to the two-tower hotel footprint, as well as the failure to consider a residential or housing alternative use for the site. These concerns were echoed, as folks have mentioned already today, by the city's Design Review Board members. So too, these concerns implicate inconsistencies with relevant factors specified under the code. Consistent with Glendale Municipal Code, the city should instruct the applicant and city staff to revise the project design to address the DRB's various concerns. So we respectfully request the following to be included as part of council's comments and recommendations on the project. One, to confirm all required publicly accessible open space requirements meeting the letter and the spirit of the DSP. Two, locate all required publicly accessible space on the two-tower hotel footprint. Three, configure all required public open spaces into one or two sufficiently large and contiguous areas. Four, remove all driveways and other vehicle hazards from required public open space. Five, confirm what authority allows for the transfer of SAR and whether any projects or cases serve as a precedent. And six, provide alternative site plans and project alternatives for purposes of sequel that accommodate the following. The DSP's proposed pedestrian passage eliminated by the current project design, that it provides open space near the building's main entrance, limits height to 25 stories and 300 feet, and provides flexibility for future conversion to residential uses.
Carly, you're two minutes in.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Carly. And that was the end of the callers?
Correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Spector, would either one of you like to comment on the callers?
I have no comment for the union callers this time.
Okay, all right. I'll go to my colleagues then for comments, questions.
I have questions.
Mr. Agudanian.
My question is to the designer, the architect. I'm looking at... Can you hear me properly or I have to maybe to take this off?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm looking at page... Hold on one second. Yeah. Page 50. And...
Make sure he's got the right exhibit.
Oh, I don't know. I have page 50 here, but I don't know what will be the right one for him.
What's the plan? Is it a plan of a building or an elevation?
The one which shows the height of the buildings.
This one, Mr. Agudanian?
The west and... Yes. West and east. The west and, yes. West and east. Uh, on the west, the height is 386. West tower is 386, 86 feet high and the east tower is 406 feet high. Existing building, of course, there is no size on it, but I think based on what I see here, uh, the top point is 250 feet high and, uh, on existing, the lower height is 220. Are you following me? What I'm trying to say so far, I want you to know the numbers.
You understand?
I'm only talking about the numbers. I want you to understand why I'm going there. Now, I'm looking at the parking. You have a parking based on one of, oh, on page now 21. I don't know if they can show page 21. Can I show page 21?
Brother, I wonder if you can show the
Yeah, that you show a schematic design, stage one it says, and page 21, it's the showing the height and the, how, you know, the, the levels or, I mean, however, in there, I'm, you're showing five stories of, uh, five-level parking lot. Do you know which one I'm talking about?
I think that may have been the section.
Yeah, intersect.
The section drawing?
The section which shows there are five levels of parking.
So may I show, share my screen?
Mr. Agajanian, can you give us the page number? I'm sorry, did you say?
Page 21.
21, thank you.
Of exhibit one.
Salim, would you like me to bring it up?
For, from our
Yes, I can show.
Right, yeah, okay.
I can show my screen if, if I can.
Uh, what I'm trying to say, you have such a tall buildings, I think will be one of the tallest or close to one of the tallest buildings. See, these are the towers, 386 feet high on the right and on the left is three, 408 feet high. And then on the bottom, if they would show page 21, you would see you have 60 feet of parking structure, structure. And you have this
May I explain, please?
Uh, page 21, you have 60 feet of high, uh, there, tall parkings. I was thinking, maybe you, uh, you take the parking on the basement and the spread it on the entire area of the property except the existing building which is next to it, which, except the existing building, you have empty lot that the entire underground can be parking. And so you may be able to eliminate this sixth level of parking of, which amounts to 60 feet high. So your building will be lowered from 340 to 326 feet high. So it was not, it's not going to be that exposing, that giant. So it'll be lowered drastically. That's, is there any reason that you wouldn't consider that?
Thank you. May I explain? Number one, the building height is measured to the top of the roof of the last living livable floor, and that is the 380 feet. Above that, it is the mechanical, the mechanical components, the elevator over and elevator machine room and other mechanical component.
Right.
And, and for the parkings, we have below grade and above grade to meet the parking requirements. As you can see in the plan here, the parking is completely screened from the street by, uh, guest room layouts. And that is also in line with the DSP guideline to have a 60-feet-high podium. So if I may show you the plan. You can see the parking is all located to the south of the building, which is hidden from the street front. The street front is all used to buy usable, uh, usable guest, guest suits and other uses.
No, but what, how many levels of parking you have in the basement?
The basement, we have four levels of below grade.
So that's what I'm saying.
And it may end up as four or five.
No, but, uh, you own the, uh, property south of that parking and the structure. You own the, I mean, ONI owns the lot south of whatever you are showing in here, don't they?
You are right. So
That's what I'm saying.
Let me see this plan.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So this existing parking is serving the existing office tower and the single-stories building. And also, we are providing additional parking in the development, which is taken away from the surface parking. So that's why we had to have so many levels of parking, not only to serve this new development, but also to serve some of the parking loss from the surface level parking. But we will take your point and we will look into how we can improve this concept scheme.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Agajanian?
Uh, so however, in brief, I wanted to say if you spread it, the parking more and go deeper, the building will not be that tall and imposing. That's what I was trying to say. Uh, I have other question, but I will ask at a later time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone who would like to go next?
Um, I have a few questions.
Okay. Mr. Kasakian.
Um, there were a number of recommendations made by the design or comments made by the design review board. This presentation that was presented to us, did it address any of these particular? Are we looking at the same renderings and the documents as they were presented to the design review board?
You're looking at basically the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and has anyone explained, uh, why, uh, this was changed from, uh, the previous proposal, which was what, in 2017, I believe? Was that when there was an original proposal for the development at the site that was supposed to be housing or residential?
I, I don't remember the exact date, but yes.
What, what is the reasoning for the change from that to this project? And if it's staff or the developer?
Best person to ask is the developer.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. This is, this is Mark Specter. I can speak to that. So, uh, we originally proposed a multifamily project. Unfortunately, there's a moratorium placed on the site. And then the, uh, updated, uh, downtown plan, um, put into effect an affordable housing fee that's, uh, no longer made it possible for the multifamily project to pencil. Um, but given that we're a privately owned, family-owned company, um, made the decision to pivot to a hotel project, um, that we're quite confident we can deliver.
Okay. Um, and if this was a residential project, how many parking spaces would be required to have versus what it's before us with?
That would depend on, um, that would depend on the, the bedroom count of the, uh, of the units.
If this was, as is, a residential project versus the fact that it's being brought forth to us as a hotel, what would the parking differential be?
Uh, I'd have to do some calculations. Yeah.
I'd, I'd be curious to know if someone can do some.
To go back, it, it does depend on how, how many bedroom, what the bedroom count is. So if there's
Sure. So, and we know the bedroom count for this hotel.
Yeah.
If this was, if we were playing development Mad Libs and we transposed hotel for residential, what would be the parking requirement?
Mr. Kasakian, 840 rooms, uh, say 850 rooms. You're about 17, uh, 1,700 spaces. At average two per room, uh, two per unit, two parking spaces per unit. But as Mr. Kiesel and, and Mr. Garcia said, three-bedroom, you're going to have a little bit more. One-bedroom, you're going to have a little bit less. So if you're looking for general range, 1,600, 1,700 spaces. If this were an apartment.
Sure. And, and what is the proposal again right now for the parking or how much parking does this project have in the current proposal?
For the current?
The current proposal has new, 700 new parking spaces.
Okay.
That is including the hotel, this parking and also the commercial parking required for the project.
Okay. Um, I do have to say that the renderings look awfully nice. They are, it's whoever did the renderings, it looks beautiful. Unfortunately, it's one of those issues I have with development renderings because it happened to catch the sunlight at the perfect time of day. Um, these sidewalks that look wider in these renderings than they are when they're actually, when the building is actually built. Uh, you know, one of these days, I'd like to see a rendering that presents a project on a typical hazy Southern California summer day versus at twilight. Um, but, you know, one of the issues with the project as it is presented in terms of those sidewalks, which I don't know how, what the width of them will be, and I am very concerned about the narrow sidewalks with a lot of the developments that were done in downtown, some so narrow that, you know, two people walking side by side cannot easily traverse the sidewalk. They have to walk single file. Um, is related to these issues regarding contiguous green space and adequate green space and how it's been presented. Um, I don't see that necessarily in this project. I see haphazardly green spaces placed here and there, but I would like to see for, as we're seeing, um, projects come into the downtown, um, taking up whatever available space there is. And we have made a point to try and, uh, protect some green space or at least provide some usable green space. Um, on this particular, uh, design, I, I don't see that. And I don't know how, um, that can be remedied. I'll have some more comments, but that's all for now as I'm kind of going through things. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Brotman or Najarian?
I have a question. Um, maybe of the city attorney.
Okay.
Um, what ever happened to Orange Street? Did we completely cede our interest in that or is there some sort of easement or some sort of, um, right that we have to reclaim that as it crosses, well, as it is terminated at Doran Street? Because that is a, you know, in our last traffic study, circulation study, that was a problem. We could have otherwise done one-way couplets, but that was identified as a problem. So how do we give away Orange Street to the owner, the then-owner of that parcel? That's kind of ridiculous.
I, I can't speak to that. I don't know the history on, on how it came to be. I, I know there were some discussions about maybe it would be beneficial to have it connect all the way through, but I don't know, I don't know all the history of where that ended up, but we'd have to, we could look at it, work with
Yeah, can we check that?
Work with that, the departments on that.
I can't imagine council would have given it away in perpetuity and maybe said if there's any significant development or change to that site, the city may have rights to reclaim it. I mean, I assume that the developer has done the chain of title and the
I would assume so too, and that it's all
Title report.
In order for financing, that it's all in fee ownership, but we, we could look at it.
Yeah, because it is. You know, that's supposed to go all the way through the Sanchez and it, it stops right now as it hits that parking structure. Also, is there, in the project, Roger, is there any, uh, concession given to the widening of Sanchez? I know when they built the Altana, Moderna, whatever they call that at the corner, the residential of Central and Sanchez, we, we asked them to extend the width of Central at that location and they took that around the corner as well onto Sanchez. Is there any continuation of that width, uh, from, from Central to Brand along Sanchez or is it, the curb will remain where it's at?
I believe it's been taken into account.
We're getting a few, few extra feet in that, uh, location. Okay. All right, those are my questions.
Mr. Brotman, any questions, comments?
Yeah, well, I, we're doing questions now and then we'll close the
You may, you may do questions or you can, yeah, I have a question, but I'll let you go before.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have a question. I know this is a stage one design review and this wouldn't really, I don't think it can factor into what we decide, but I'm, I'm just really interested in this question of room size. And, um, you know, this was brought up at the DRB and I think, um, Chair Simonian mentioned, um, that the, you know, the, this is something like double, the average room size for hotels in, in the US. Um, I think the average was something like, maybe somebody can confirm 700 and something square feet. Um, and I, you know, and, and he also said, and I don't really have any other knowledge of whether this is the case, but he also said that the trend is towards smaller room sizes. So I'm just, I'm puzzled as to what the thinking is behind, you know, some of these very, very large suites which, you know, are significantly bigger than my house. Um, what, what's the thinking behind that? Is this Olympics-related? What, what is, why would this be so, um, you know, uh, kind of such an outlier, I guess, to, um, to the, the typical hotel and to the trend if that's actually correctly characterized?
Sure, I can answer that. This is Mark Specter from ONI. Um, unit size is actually something we're reviewing. Um, it's not out of the question for the unit sizes to be reduced. I think at this early of the stage, um, obviously we're trying to get as much feedback from the community as possible, um, but it's not out of the question that the unit sizes get, get reduced.
But what was, that's not really, I mean, my, my question is really, what was the thinking behind doing it this way?
Uh, sure. I mean, it's, it's actually something the ownership believes, uh, there's a demand, especially nowadays, for, um, a little bit of a larger unit size, uh, than you would typically see, um, in, in most hotels. Um, and so, I mean, as we go through the, uh, development and financing process, obviously we need to prove that out through a, uh, demand study, but, um, this is a, uh, kind of a concept that they're internally proving out. Um, as a, as a private company, more than likely, um, the project will, uh, will be operated by ONI in, in some capacity as, as our own flag. Um, so it could be a new concept, um, with slightly larger unit, uh, sizes, or it could be a, um, reduced. We're, we're gauging the market as we go.
Are, are there any, any, um, comparable hotels that ONI has built or manages or any of your competitors manage? Is there, what's, what's the market look like now? And, and also like who, what's the idea? Who would be the, uh, where would the demand be coming from for, for, you know, sizes like, um, I don't know, 2,000 square feet or whatever it was?
Uh, we don't own any hotels that, uh, have larger room sizes like this. Uh, we do, we do own a couple hotels. Uh, the Opus Hotel is one of them. Um, as far as demands, again, it's more of a hunch that, um, the family traveler, the worker traveler would be interested in, in larger, uh, room sizes. But again, you know, we would prove that out through, through the process of the development. And, and reducing the sizes of the rooms is, is not out of the question at this point. This is our, our first foot forward and, and we're happy to kind of get all the feedback officially today.
Okay. Yeah, that's the only question I have.
Okay. And, and I'm going to follow up with that question. And I know it's, you know, that's not what our purview is today, but just for curiosity, was, was the 2,000 square feet, um, kind of part of maybe this is going to be a four or five-star hotel?
Um, as, as far as to the level, I think it, it not necessarily gauged on four or five stars, more on, uh, potential people or persons staying there. Again, more geared towards families, um, and that type of thing.
Okay. I have a question for staff. Bradley, maybe? I have a question for staff, Bradley, maybe. Did, did they receive air rights when they were computing their, um, FAR?
Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, no. Uh, I know that letter had expressed some comments regarding transfer development rights. Uh, that was not the case. We do calculate the site as one, including the existing development, so there was no transfer that occurred in this instance. Uh, we currently don't have a transfer development rights program that would allow that anyways.
Okay, I didn't think so. All right, thank you. Okay, uh, then with that being said, no more questions, let's, shall we start, uh, um, should I close the public hearing?
There are no more questions for applicant, yes.
No more questions, we'll go on, excuse me, to discussion. Okay. Who would like to begin? Let's, let's do this.
I'll start.
Okay, Councilmember Najarian. Kick it off.
Those are, I, those are nice renderings. Uh, I congratulate the design team. Um, and as, as Mr. Kasakian said, I consider those glam photos.
Indeed.
Which certainly paint anything. Uh, glam photos paint a person in the very best light. Um, they are, uh, I was a little shocked, I have to be, be honest, when I first got the notice, um, of the, the hearing, and I saw that there were gonna be a thirty-four and thirty-five story tower. I was a little shocked as to the height, and although I, I clearly see that it is permitted under the DSP, it's, um, it seems really high for me, and it's about fifty percent higher than any of the, the other higher buildings. I know the, the, uh, the Unum Building is at six fifty-five North Central, twenty-four stories. Um, this is, you know, a good ten, twelve stories higher than that. Um, so that's my first comment on the general design. I think it's high, and even though it could be permitted, I would be happier to see something a little lower. I know Mr. Agajanian went through the exercise of suggesting that a, a deeper subterranean, uh, parking, uh, several deeper subterranean parking levels could help bring the size down. Of course, that's, we all know that that makes the cost, uh, very more expensive than originally proposed. I don't know what subterranean spots are going for now, sixty thousand, seventy thousand a spot as you go down, especially at those fifth and sixth levels. Uh, but regardless, I would like to see a reduced height. Uh, I agree with the, uh, Design Review Board, the facades are, there's a little too much going on there. You've got one building with the balconies that are straight, the next-door building has the, the swirvy, you know, the, the articulated balcony, um, fronts, if you will. That's, that's a little bit much, I think. I would like to see something a little more, um, streamlined, a little more simple in both the facade and the, uh, I guess the art, let's call it the art, the articulation. The, um, but to contradict myself, on the first few levels of, uh, of the building, in which you have, I, the first four levels as it faces Sanchez, that is, that's a little too monolithic for me. It's a, just a straight, appears like a glass wall. So I'd like to see less, uh, less on the top, a little bit more articulation on the first four levels, and I'd like to see more, uh, attention to the open space. It's gotta be, you know, when we went through this exercise with the, the DSP, we really wanted open space that was inviting, usable, uh, accessible, uh, for not just people of the project itself, but others, uh, who are gonna be working, uh, promenading up and down Brand Boulevard. Um, I didn't, I didn't see if there's a banquet hall that's proposed. Is there a large, uh, hall, you know, like the other, like the Hilton, let's say? Is there something like that that's proposed?
Uh, not specifically on the ground floor. Um, there are some amenity rooms on the, on the podium level that are large. Uh, I'm not sure what those are gonna be programmed for.
And I understand this is, you know, that would all be within the building, and it really wouldn't affect the design component, but, uh, I just was wondering about that. The pool area and that, uh, fifth floor deck, I, I like, actually, I think that's, uh, that's very nice. Someone had suggested put a observation deck, or a top deck on the building. I think that would be, um, I think that would be quite attractive. I don't know how that fits with the, um, mechanical, uh, elevator pulleys and all that that are, that are up there. But I think, at least in one of the buildings, if there was a, uh, observation deck, or some sort of restaurant area where people could gather, I think that would be very much, uh, the, the in thing, if this thing was ever, um, to be completed. Um, those are, I mean, I'm still, I, I gotta be honest with you, it's still, I'm still a little bit in awe as to the size of these two towers. The more I see the, the renderings, I feel a little bit less anxious, but it's still something that, that it's gonna take me a little while to get over with. The massing and the height, um, you know, is something that, frankly, I never envisioned in the city of Glendale, something that high, but I understand that, that everything is to code, and you're not at, requesting any variances. But it, nevertheless, it's something that, that I need to take a, you know, take a pause and sort of reflect and become used to the idea. I don't know how the residents would feel about it. I think the residents, if they get wind of this, may be in shock also, and may have greater expression of their shock than I am at this moment, but, uh, you know, that, that just remains to be seen. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Mr. Brotman?
Might as well.
Go ahead, councilmember. Go, have at it.
Um, first, just a couple of questions. Um, we, we, and this is for, um, city attorney. Um, so, you know, some of the callers mentioned, you know, project labor agreements or labor relations. Is that, is that something we can consider?
Uh, councilmember, councilmember Brotman, uh, well, a couple of things. So first, at this stage, uh, stage one, it's, it's really a preliminary review of the concept, so you're not, you're not approving any, any part of the project, you have to go through the next steps. The other piece of it is, under our DSP and under our current hotel incentive, that there, although there is the opportunity for a development agreement or covenant, that is not part of what is negotiated as part of that, as part of those agreements. Um, certainly something I'm willing, we're willing to look at, but, um, the, the way we've interpreted, that's not something we would impose as a condition on, on these projects.
But when you say we're willing, we, we're, we're able to look at it, so what, this would be in the discussion of a development agreement, that we could potentially negotiate terms like that?
So, the, again, under, and maybe Jillian can chime into, I know she's on, we've, I think that the DSP allows the, um, discussion, um, with the applicants, for the applicant to have the choice of the covenant or the development agreement, and, um, it's ver- usually the development agreement is an option when they're asking for something beyond their entitlements. So beyond the designer view, they're asking for something such as the project we heard, we were, we were gonna hear, we heard last week, where they wanted to extend those entitlements. Then, at that point, you can negotiate further. But when they're just asking for the designer view, it's generally not within the purview of that, that particular approval.
Okay, okay. And, um, another thing that was, we, we heard, I think, on one of the calls, and we got in the letter, was, um, uh, kind of, uh, a critique that there wasn't consideration of alternative uses for housing. Is that something that, that we can consider in this? Or, or...
I think, yeah, I think you've nailed, you know, you've hit the issue, Councilmember Brotman, the, the hotel use is permitted, um, under the DSP, so it is the, the applicant's choice on which project that they wanna push forward.
Okay. And then, um, the third question is, um, back to air rights, which, um, uh, Mayor Devine mentioned. Um, I, it sounded like that question, the answer to that question was transferring air rights from one property to another, but I think here, I know that, um, one of the DRB members, I think it was, uh, um, uh, Member Welch, mentioned, um, he was concerned about just transferring, you know, air rights, is I guess a loose term, from one part of this site to enable the, the, the height, and he commented that this was, he felt, contrary to the spirit, if not maybe the letter of, of our DSP guidelines. So, um, wh- what's your, what's your take on that? I mean, how much flexibility do we have to render a judgment as to whether, you know, that should be permissible to take, you know, kind of the density from an unimproved, an area that's not gonna be improved, and transfer it? And the same thing, I guess, would go with the open space, um, because they're taking that open space that's, that's existing and, and applying that to their requirement.
So with respect to, like, the density, um, it's one parcel, is my understanding? So it's, you're not, you're not transferring anything, it's all, the, the, the parcel's entitled to a certain amount of density, so that's, that is what it is, plus that you, plus then you, you add the incentive. Uh, with respect to the open space, from a, from a legal perspective, and, and the, the planners may have some additional input on how, how you, you look at it from the, the actual, you know, planning practice, um, we think that the, it is permitted to you use the, what there exists, how they're proposing to, it's permitted to do that? However, I do, we also believe that the council has some discretion to say, we want the open space to look differently, to have, to be more centralized. We think that the DSP allows you that, that discretion.
Okay, okay. So, um, yeah, those were some questions I had. And then, just in terms of comments, um, well, first, I wanna, I wanna say that I really liked the process we went through with, um, advisory review by the Design Review Board. I, I personally felt that was extremely helpful, and pretty much all my comments are gonna be just echoing what they said, because, um, I mean, I'm not a design guy, I, I can't even, you know, I'm not even good at matching a tie with a shirt, which is why I rarely wear a tie, so. Um, their input, I think, was really very helpful, and I wanna thank especially Chair Simoniun, but all of them. I mean, I thought they all made great comments. So, you know, I, I agree with what I heard. I watched the, the DRB meeting, and I, you know, I agree that the, um, it, it just, it's too tall, and it feels too tall. Um, and, um, I know it's, it's allowed, but I, I would think that, um, perhaps there's ways with, um, uh, maybe stepping it down somehow, so that there's a little bit more of a, of a transition to the, um, the surrounding buildings. Um, I know it'll be bigger than them, but I, I would think that, um, uh, doing something like that, um, would, would maybe reduce that sense of massing. Um, let's see. Um, the, um, one of the, I think it was, uh, Chair Simoniun mentioned, uses this word "design language," which I'm not familiar with, but now I'm gonna start using it. So, he said, um, uh, he, he mentioned that, you know, the design, he liked the design language. I mean, for me, I think that this is, because this would be the biggest building in Glendale, it would be really something that would, um, get a lot of notice. Um, and, and the design we saw, you know, it looks nice, I won't say it's bad, but I, I kind of feel like we deserve something a lot more, um, you know, special, um, you know, there in the, in that gateway district. So, I, I'm just, I, I don't think that kind of lives up to the, the potential of what we could have in our tallest building. Um, also, one of the board members talked about, you know, um, the fact that it doesn't speak to the Glendale context, uh, it doesn't have a sense of place. Um, and so, it, it, I, I tend to agree with that. It would be, it would be better to see something that speaks to some aspect of Glendale, the Alex, or, you know, our Adobes, or our train station, or something that kind of has, um, you know, that says Glendale. Um, the, another thing I think is, um, uh, you know, that flat facade, um, I appreciate the, the wavy balconies, but, um, the flat facade is just another, you know, it's, it's, it just feels very imposing, and maybe more articulation there would, would give it, give it additional visual interest. Um, I won't go into the open space, I agree with what DRB said, um, that it should be connected, it should be contiguous, um, should be designed in a way that it's actually gonna get used, uh, and meet this, meet the spirit of, of the downtown guidelines. Um, and, yeah, I think I'll leave it there. Those were, those were my comments. I agree on the roof deck, and, and there were a number of other things that the DRB suggested. I, I thought all their comments are really valuable.
Sir Agajanian, Mr. Kasakian, councilmembers, who would like to go next? Thank you.
Mr. Agajanian, do you want to?
No, go ahead.
Um, you know, for me, I, I just can't understand our need to continue playing monopoly with our city blocks, where we're putting a hotel on every block, it's just, um, but I understand also the circumstances that have brought us here at this point, I don't necessarily agree with them. Um, and I think it would be, uh, a much more enticing or interesting project if it did offer up at least some elements of housing, uh, to, uh, our city, especially when we have our backs to the wall with the state and, and requirements to, um, provide more housing. I, I do, uh, tend to agree with some of the comments that were made by the Design Review Board. Um, I, I think that, you know, that corner element, um, isn't very interesting or engaging. Uh, it seems, you know, just very bulky, um, the entire project, but again, I, I hesitate to say these things because I'm not an architect, and I'm not a designer, and if you ask me to design something better, I'm not gonna sit here and necessarily tell you. I do know what I think is important, it's to have adequate, um, publicly accessible green space in, in the areas where, um, the public will be mostly interacting with, uh, the building, or, you know, if it needs to go higher in one direction, but provide, um, some, uh, realistically usable frontage, um, that would be, uh, definitely a plus. On, I also have to say, just because you can build something, doesn't mean you necessarily should. Um, we've seen this a number of times with parcels and in our single, uh, residential home neighborhoods, where a person will try to combine lots and wants to build to the maximum, and then we end up here, uh, on an appeal from residents, listening to the issue, and oftentimes, we come to a conclusion that it does need to be scaled back, it needs to be compatible. And I can tell you that the fact that this is going to be potentially the largest structure in downtown is not something that is, um, necessarily enticing, especially when it's not some sort of iconic, uh, building, uh, that people throughout LA County will point to and say, wow, look at what, um, Glendale has done, especially as they drive past a major thoroughfare artery like the 134. Uh, I noticed in some of the renderings, there was, um, this Pollyannaish hope that we're gonna have that Space 134 cap built over three, over the freeway. I'd like to see that built someday before I'm gone, but I don't see that necessarily happening. Um, so perhaps it's a legacy for future generations that sit up here to see that completed, but I don't think that's necessarily what, something you wanna hinge your, um, project on, and in terms of how it interacts with the public spaces. So, um, I would like to see the team go back to the Design Review Board and come up with an alternate proposal, um, in terms of design and how it fits into that particular corner versus what, uh, is presented here today, taking into consideration the comments that have been made, uh, by various councilmembers and the Design Review Board members. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Agajanian.
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor. First, um, I'm still baffled, how many hotels do we need in Glendale? I mean, this is, um, it's beyond me, why come up with hotels right and left? We have one on Colorado, not this one. But however, uh... But however, this, as I mentioned before, I want to see that the parking stalls to be in the basement. This way, if we do this, one of the buildings, the one which is west, will be 326 feet high. The other one, the east building, will be 348 feet high. The reason I am so insisting on this, because our tallest building, which I'm not happy with it, being on the corner of freeway, 134 freeway and Central, is 333 feet high. And, and that's called, I guess, Glendale Plaza now, before was something different. It's 24, 25 stories high and, as I said, 333 feet high. So I want this to be at least in the same level. Still will be higher than the other one, but it's not going to be 60 feet higher than the tallest building in Glendale. I want to see the driveway, if it'll be any driveway on brand. The driveway to get into this, to be only to get into this complex, not to get off to brand, just to enter from brand to the hotel complex. And not to be one lane, to be at least three, four, five lanes, lanes. So nobody will stop the traffic. Because if we have one lane to enter from brand to this hotel complex, the traffic, they're going to have a problem with the traffic, especially in the morning, probably. So I would like to see, again, I'm saying entrance, I have no problem with it, to get to this complex, but to be four or five lane to enter, no exit. And I want to see, as is mentioned by my colleague, Councilmember Najarian, to see the setback on the Sanchez, like the other newer buildings, to have that. However, I like the building. I don't want to say to architects what to do because they are expert, how to design it, the facade, how to be. It looks nice to me. And I'm hoping that, as has been mentioned here by the representative of the owner, this is just a rendering at a later time. The room size or suite size will be smaller when we get to the situation of having the phase two of this hotel complex. As I said, I hope they will change their mind and they come back with the residential units. But however, it's their building and their property, so. And I agree with most of the issues that has been raised by my colleagues. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Councilmember. First of all, I'll begin my comments by saying that I think that the DRB was spot on. And I think that speaks to the strength of our DRB. And it showed that they did their research, they really studied these plans. And I think, you know, I agree with Mr. Brothman, we owe them a thank you. The question is, does this project comply with the DSP design guidelines? Well, technically, I think it does. However, at the end of the day, the way it complies with the requirements is somewhat questionable. Let's take mass and scale. We have two towers. And these two towers, right now, look like two, well, 300 feet tall vertical monoliths. As far as I can see, there is no modulation, there is no articulation. They are just standing straight up. And you can look at page, I think 32 is my best example of these buildings and what they look like. The reduction of the floor area is only seen or occurs, accomplished at the corners. If you look at the drawings, you only see that at the corners instead of over the entire floor area of that particular part of the tower. On page 36, there's an aerial view and they really do look like one solid mass. They pushed out the balconies, and I think somebody mentioned the balconies, but they pushed them all out, but they pushed them all out the same distance and they're all straight. It's a straight mass, straight block up and down the building. There is no tapering in this, these buildings. And I agree with Councilmember Najarian that the front, the first four levels, if you look on page 32, I think it's really obvious, there is no mod. They are just, what, looks like three, two slabs piled on top of each other as kind of a base. And that, to me, is, you know, I use this term before and I'll use it again. We don't want to perpetuate what we're trying to eliminate. And it seems like these blocks are what we're trying to eliminate in our design, in our downtown, in our city. And I think, I think we can do much better than this, much better than this. And I hope the architect takes these, these comments to heart. Because what they have done, the modulation, the articulation that they've done here is not enough to alleviate the excessive mass of this structure. And so I'm, I'm really kind of, I guess, adamant about that. Open space, I agree with DRB, there is no connectivity. You have that driveway on brand, which breaks off both sections. So there's absolutely no connectivity. So, so the green space, the open space, has to be really looked at and changed, added to. I think that's about, I think I've covered, you know, I think what I'm trying to say is that, taking into consideration the comments and recommendations of the DRB, my fellow, my colleagues, the, all of the people that we've heard from, the carpenters, the United Eleven, and all the voices that we've heard from this community. I just don't think this project, as it stands, as it looks right now, is what Glendale wants. And I think we want a better design. I think with the DRB comments and what council has commented on, I think we have a, I would hope you have a good idea of what we're looking for in our, in this project. I'm not, you know, I'm not opposed to the height. I've always wanted to see higher buildings in Glendale, high, skinny buildings. I love that concept. That's what you see all over, you know, the world and you still see the sun, you still see the sky. When you get these big blocks like this, you don't see it. You lose it, you lose that feeling. So those are the changes, the, not changes, but comments that I have right now. So I'm looking at my colleagues for a motion, Alternative One, to approve the Stage One design. Alternative Two, approve Stage One submission subject to design recommendations or to deny approval and direct a redesign of the project or consider another alternative for Stage One.
Happy to move, make a motion that we, I guess, I don't know the right terminology, amend this to staff for redesign or?
If that's, it would be a denial with, of the Stage One and direct a redesign of the project.
So it would be Alternative Three? It would be Alternative Three?
Correct.
City Attorney?
So deny the project as it exists and send it for redesign?
Correct.
Based on the discussion we had today and the input from the DRB.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Jimian?
Excuse me.
Roll call?
No, excuse me.
Sure.
I mean, if we are objecting totally, I mean, then it will be hard for the project owner to put something together and come forward. It has to be more specific to, the objection is on what basis, so they can work on something. If we say we are objecting in open, I mean, this is a building that I worked with other projects. If you leave it such open way to architects and engineers and designers, say I'm objecting to it, then this will be hard. They may go back and forth 10 times and we will object again and again. Should be some limit or some procedure or way to say, this is what you have to work on, then come back forward. I mean, to have it such an open way, I mean, what they have to bring back?
Well, I think, if I may comment, and then I'll ask the, our city attorney and maybe our city manager to comment. We are here to decide on site planning, mass and scale, and give the architects and the developers, the owner, ideas on how this project would be acceptable to all of us. Am I correct, Mr. Garcia?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. So again, the option, you could have, you know, the motion could have been, for example, to approve it with the comments made by DRB as well as council or to, no, you want to see a further iteration before you move the project forward. And what I'm hearing from the motion is you want to do that second thing, which is to get more, have that design revised to incorporate all the comments of the DRB and the comments made by the council today, and then bring it back for a further Stage One, submit it back to the city council at a future date.
Correct. Are you in agreement?
I think, you know, the comments are fundamental enough that it makes sense for us to deny it at this stage. We've given a lot of input to the developer and the architect. I think they can work with that. And staff understands, I'm sure, you know, where we're coming from, so they can work with them. And I think that's the approach we should take. And if it, if it takes 10 times, it takes 10 times. We want a really well-designed iconic structure in that location because it's going to get, you know, as Councilmember Kusakian said, people are going to, you know, draw.
I buy that, it's going to be one of the first things you see. And, I guess you couldn't hear me here. And, yeah, and I think, and we got to get it right. And I think our residents expect us to get, to get it right. So however long that takes, that's okay.
But it's not that easy to go back and forth 10 times. There is money they have to spend, people who work. And if not, the direction is not clear, it will not be clear what they're, what they have to work on. I mean, it's not that easy. They go back and bring something and then we say, no, go back and do this and that. They have to have more clear understanding that what we are objecting or what we want to see or have at a later time. I mean, I have been there. I mean, you can't like this open-ended, go back and work on it and come back and then I will tell you whether I like or I don't like. I mean, this is what basically we are saying, and I object to that.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Jimian, can we do roll call on the motion?
Councilmember Brothman?
Yes.
Aganian?
Abstain.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you all very much. What's next, please?
Next would be adjournment.
Do I have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned at 4:15. Thank you.
We have a closed session, yes.
So we're going to open the, we open the closed session.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I have to, thank you.
We're going to commit our weapon.
Okay, so we'll move on to council. And I will call to order counsel at 4:15. Can, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aganian?
Present.
Brothman?
Here.
Kusakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Devine?